I don't write on.
Yeah. I'm pretty important.
One about.
I'm just gonna thank the firefighters here.
Reporting in progress. Pam, did you mean to join?
No, Simon's, I'm joined now.
I know, but you don't need to.
Oh, no, I don't need to join.
Yes.
What am I doing? Um, all right.
I think, I don't know why I had this in here. I think it should be agrees to enter into. Agreement city. Is there agreement? Our committee.
Malcolm South.
Hi.
Pam.
I'm.
How are you?
I figured it out.
We need one more.
I don't need to.
No, we don't need one.
Hello, counselor.
I just missed. I don't even know what the vote was.
A vote for what?
I just missed a shoe swap watershed.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the. Had it on the bronquet and I.
And I wore a lot of sparkles.
I.
One oh five, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I'd like to change steps today. I want to make, I want to thank, um, all of our firefighters, our first responders, our RCMP, tier firefighters, for all of their selfless acts of kindness in protecting the communities that, that we live in. And, um, they, they have a terrible, terrible job. And sometimes they just don't get all the recognition that they deserve. So I just want to take this moment and thank them all for their service. So. Um, okay, so approval of agenda recommended, recommendation that the committee, the whole meeting agenda for September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, be approved as circulated. Counselor Rich, Counselor McCabe, all in favor? Okay. Uh, recommendation that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Counselor McCabe, Counselor Beach. All right, today we have a delegation and from invasive species, Robin Hopper, from the Columbia Shoe Swap Invasive Species Society. I've known Robin for, oh, a long time now. And, uh, many years, and she does great work on the invasive species program. So take it away, Robin. I'm gonna need you to speak up and see if you get closer to that mic. Okay. A little bit. Okay. Speak loud, yeah.
Thank you very much for having me here today. Um, my name is Robin Cooper, as I said, and I'm the executive director of the Columbia Shoe Swap Invasive Species Society. By agents. Um, and personally, I have the full knowledge that species operates in the indigenous territories of the Tsunah, that still and so tonight's presentations, and we're grateful for their participation in invasive species management. Why am I here today? I'm here because this year marks our ten-year anniversary. Um, and so I'm here to recognize a milestone, sharing some success stories over the last ten years. And also because we have some, perhaps some new members, uh, staff and council that maybe don't know as much about us. Um, and to recognize your support as well. We do this as a non-for-profit charity, a very dedicated, and our work is, uh, it's done through a network of partners. And we work to facilitate the prevention, reduction, and management of the invasive species. And we do that with collaboration, engagement, and education. So some of our main goals include, um, collaborative and coordinated programs, educating, engaging, and empowering the species. Preventing the introduction of new invasive species, maximizing the probability of detection and eradication of new things that may come in, uh, as well as slowing and reversing the spread of existing species in the region, and ensuring program sustainability. We're a small and mighty team. You would recognize, uh, here on the board as Laura Gasser, our operations manager, so he directs our aquatic program. Jessica Booth is our education outreach coordinator. And then we have the general technicians and summer assistants, and here we have Emily. We sent her higher. On our board of directors, we try and represent diverse backgrounds. So it includes local government, forestry, agriculture, ranching, environmental consulting, aquatics, interests, and more. We work to include indigenous people on our board and member engagement as much as possible, and have had an indigenous representative. Uh, Jeremy Shu C is our board member. And our AGM will be held here October seventeenth. So we're really grateful, uh, Sarah and the team for letting us go start here together. October seventeenth, mark it on your calendars and left. I don't mean to describe it via third region, but just, just so you know, a big region that we work within, and there's a lot of, um, various priorities and. Uh, throughout, we see there are a number of regional invasive species organizations, and we're just one of many. Um, and we partner with them closely as, uh, as well as folks that are in the Columbia Basin, Columbia Basin Trust funding. So we meet, uh, monthly with all these initial groups and, um, it'd be a great way to collaborate, share material, and keep messages. Our outreach program includes, uh, a number of programs. Uh, our sort of behavior change strategies, mentioned in the number one strategy that we have for invasive species. And education is how we create this adventure network. So it's the cheapest option and the only long-term solution really to invasive species. So you might recognize some of these logos. Plantwise is targeted at the agriculture industry. So we meet annually with, uh, garden centers, forests, other, uh, members of the agriculture industry. We talk to them about not selling invasive plants. Don't let it loose this week at aquarium trade. Play Clean Go is encouraging outdoor recreation best practices. You might see that at Trailhead, we partner with, uh, Stupid or maybe other parks. Clean Drain Drive, you're all familiar with Clean Drain Drive, which is focused on watercraft fishing and other aquatic groups. We're urging them to clean their boats, bring them completely dry, that could be in water bodies, um, and stopping at those extension stations along the border. And Bio Local Burn Local is rented to spread of invasive, um, forest, oh, sorry, firewood. And that's a big protection program for forests, for forests. And these programs are all used locally, as well as regionally, originally, and even internationally. Really well-recognized, well-researched programs. I thought I'd share some of our, uh, success stories from the last ten years. There's really big numbers that are kind of fun to share. So we chart, talked to over twenty-five, almost twenty-five thousand people. Uh, attended eight hundred and ten events, seventy-three workshops, training sessions, fifty-one youth education sessions, almost fifteen thousand educational materials, delivering the daily fifty-seven E newsletters, and almost four hundred used pieces in the media. So what we, what we can see is direct results with invasive plant eradications, reductions at specific sites, and increased awareness of invasive species and best practices. I wanted to mention in particular the importance of the aquatic outreach. So you, uh, and you guys, I think, are some of our strongest supporters of applying invasive outreach. Uh, and this is how we prevent the spread of invasive ground quagga mussels. They are not yet known species. Um, and so there are, um, a lot of elements to aquatic outreach. We speak to marinas, saltwater associations, and then just voters on programs. Uh, and in the last ten years, we've installed forty-seven clean drain drives, signs that will launch this in the region, spoken with over fifteen hundred voters and held two hundred and sixty voter outreach booths. Um, we've also partnered to help fund the billboard signs that you'll see coming into the region as well. It encourages voters to stop at watercraft inspection stations. Our operational program, we do a lot of work, um, on various invasive plants. We could just highlight some of our top threats. Um, but they include species like blueweed, giant hogweed, knotweed, teakville, scotch broom, and others that are top of the list. Um, and we operate a terrestrial invasive plant program to work survey and treat these species. So in the past ten years, we've visited almost five hundred landowners, responded to over five hundred invasive plant reports, received eight hundred and thirty requests for information, and they delivered almost twenty-five hundred landowner outreach letters. Um, we've also completed over five thousand invasive plant surveys, treated two, over two hundred, say mechanically, and helped seventy-four community people. So again, a lot of big numbers, but just to say that there's been a lot of work on the ground. We also help operate chemical treatment programs with specific plant mentors. Uh, here with the district, you have your own staffing contractors that carry out invasive plant treatments, but we're available with resources and. And, and I'll just say, you know, why do we care about these invasive plants? They have many threats, but, um, economy, uh, society, and human health are, uh, and the environment are the top reasons. And the new report just came out that sixty-three billion dollars is, is, uh, what's, what it costs to have invasive species managed worldwide. So it costs them money. It, it's the bottom line. Um, and prevention is really a big, big thing. Um, which I'll get to. So in the aquatic outreach program, our field program, we've, uh, sampled over seven hundred, um, water samples, water samples in thirteen water bodies. And the basic story we have there is that there's no relief mussels, um, in the region, and it'd be. So it's kind of a funny thing when the best story is of how it found something. We don't have the nets. Um, climate change, uh, oh, sorry, before we get to that. Um, just to go back to what's happened in Sycamore directly in the past few years, um, in twenty twenty-one, we have a available campaign here distributing information packets uh, about highly invasive plant novelty, reaching over twelve hundred landowners. What we can see from those pieces of outreach is that we have direct, kind of, um, eradication on the ground of some of those species by part of landowners. And then with regards to climate change, there are a few main links between climate change and invasive species. Uh, climate change can change the ranging extent of making species, they can spread, uh, more easily into new ecosystems with climate warming. And, uh, they can do better than our native species. They can also increase the frequency and severity of large disturbances. So, um, like you were just mentioning, with wildfire hazard in this region, uh, invasive species tied into that directly, species like scotch broom are highly flammable. They're kind of toxic. Um, I'm sorry, they're, they're oil that's kind of very highly flammable. So it's not just about the, you know, the environmental impact or the cost to farmers. It's, it's really about protecting our communities as well. Um, invasive species also reduce their ecosystem reliability and ability to withstand the changes in climate. So, um, there are just many reasons why we need to consider invasive species as part of climate change adaptation as well. So I've mentioned a few times prevention is the cheapest. A lot of the research shows that if we can get invasive species early on in invasion, we're gonna save ourselves a lot of money in the long run. And so that's why we need talking to the various stakeholders and.
Yeah.
Target audience and pathways of spread.
Yeah.
And then that, that's management.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, they're, they're amazing. They're amazing. I keep my, sorry, I don't normally wear my, sorry, I'll, whatever I, I poured the epithelium off my left. There we go. I muted them.
So, yeah, I would say we, the target audiences, we talk about these best management practices, like behavior change programs, and then policy, and then working with, like, uh, landowners and government staff, um, on how we. Ways in which we partner with the municipality and regional districts, I think, is through training. Uh, so we provide training for business staff and contractors, uh, as well as workshops for the public, industry, government, investors, groups, and other stakeholders. We provide landowner outreach, um, in the municipality and surrounding areas, and we respond to invasive species reports. Uh, we also are available for fee-for-service work. As I mentioned, the district kind of manages their program on their own boat. But that is something that we do with other municipalities, and then, um, having a fine show on that as well. So today I wanted to honor the, your support of the species in the past ten years, and a word to give appreciation, a small little token. Um, but it's something to say thank you for your support of invasive species management. Including in-kind supports, board member supports, uh, and kind of all the little in-kind pieces that, that we recognize. Um, we really, you know, rely on these partnerships for our sustainability. Our funding has, um, grown with the time we've started, and as we can see, much has been accomplished in the last ten years. So we'll close hand this down to pass along to Mayor Kelly.
We get a picture, Kelly? Sure. We'll do a.
Get her with the mayor.
Um, I can slide to the, to all of our vendors and partners.
Thank you. I'm gonna do it now. Sorry, Robin.
Yeah.
Let's just do it. And, uh. Yeah, yeah.
Great idea. Thank you. Yeah, so we have a number of of participants, uh, funded and supported. Thank you to all of these groups. Um, and feel free to email or call anytime. Happy to answer any questions. And, um, thank you again for having me here.
Thank you, Robin. Now, so does anyone have any questions for Robin? Robin, do we have any updated numbers for zebra and quagga mussel, um, manage, for the management of, if we do, uh, get them in the water here in B.C.?
Should have had that number with me today, but it's, it's, you know, like, it's around forty or fifty million dollars annually is what it would cost to be. If you had it. So I had that question, and I had another council meeting, like, oh, well, you know, I also want to have these watercraft inspection stations. For those of you that aren't as familiar with the invasive, quagga mussels, they fog up our in-house, I mean, and infrastructure, they also reduce water quality and reduce carbon quality. So it's a little bit of work that we need to do to prevent it. It's really saving the best.
Okay, Counselor Richardson, Counselor Beach.
Through the chair, I, um, Colleen's a, the mayor, is a huge proponent, um, and, uh, of you folks. And, and we've learned a lot about, um, mussels since I've joined, uh, the council. But are they in Alberta? Like, a lot of our, our main tourists come out of Alberta. We do have stations when you come between B.C. and Alberta, but.
We're fortunate. We have a buffer.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. It's interconnected, ready to answer. So we have, um, around, we have Alberta has no mussel, Washington had no mussel, Idaho. One, uh, close to all the ones. Or no, in Idaho, but it's now firm near mussels. So it's almost like we have a little bit of a separate above those other provinces. And they all have their own watercraft inspection station. And even in the places that you can have invasive mussels, they'll sometimes have the watercraft to your combination stations. Cause they're helping voters clean off before they went for it. So there's a, a really great communication system between all the different provinces, states around infected, and voters, uh, watercraft. They call ahead and they tell each other where there's something in coming their way. And there's also training for border guard, border service. It's definitely a cross-agency effort.
And just to that point, I had a, uh, watercraft come into the marina, and it came from Winnipeg. And I asked them, I said, have you been through the clean drain and dry program? And they said yes, and they had to, um, they also had to quarantine for thirty days before they could fill their boat into B.C. So there are some, you know, uh, safeguards in place. Go ahead, Counselor Beach.
Through the chair, I, I just, um, I'm wondering if anybody is aware, I, I know the, the cost that they came up with for managing it if we got infected. But there's a huge cost to the communities in terms of econ- economic tourism dollars and that kind of thing that has never, you never hear it mentioned. Is there any province that's infested that's actually done a study and has come up with the actual cost of an invasive species in their, to their economy? Because if there isn't, that's what we need to do. Is to start making a point that it's not just about management, it's about the loss of the economy that all.
Absolutely, tourist.
Communities.
Yeah.
So we need this, we need to do that. If no one else has tried to do that, we need to put on it. Cause that's, right?
Yeah, the recent report that just came out this spring, um, did have like several elements that were different. The man, like managing the species, the cost to, um, water infrastructure, facilities, water quality. Um, and I'm trying to remember, I know this, like, trees and tourism piece was mentioned in there, but coming up with actual figures is difficult sometimes for those pieces. Um, but I think it's like a possibility, yeah, I think it's a big event that you go to with. I think underlying that support of this initial program is, is good to keep to you because it's not just about the management costs. It's about, it's about the same facts.
Yeah.
Community, tourism, recreational.
Thank you. I do remember that report, and that was my thought. There's no consideration for the loss of economy to all of.
And here in British Columbia, we have to consider salmon run as well, right? Because if quagga and zebra mussels are, you know, infest our waters, then they eat the nutrients. So the salmon that are coming here to spawn are, have nothing to eat in their travels, so. Go ahead, Pam. Through the chair, they attach to the fish is what they do. We know that. I'm not one hundred percent certain, Pam, you're.
No, that, 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 um, that was checked out through the Shoe Swap Water Ship Council. It is true. Okay, can attach to the fish and the young, the, what do they call? Fingerlings?
Fire.
Fire fingerlings. What are fingerlings?
Any other questions?
Counselor. I just had a quick one about the bio-local burn local or burn local bio-local. I, I'm not familiar with that. I haven't, I wasn't aware of that one.
Yeah, it's a newer program. Um, so we're trying to do more over to that, about that with campgrounds and tourism groups. Because that's really about the folks coming into the region, bringing firewood from elsewhere. Uh, and the threat would be that pests and diseases can travel on that firewood and then can spread to local forests. So, um, small things that you might not think of. And, uh, yeah, if there's any other avenues you can think of that we can do in outreach there, that you'd like to see a fact, just always over to the back end, I think.
Awesome. Anyone else? Counselor Bushell.
Yes, through the chair. Yeah, thanks for everything you do, Robin, you and your team. Um, yeah, I really like the idea about the economic impact study that, you know, that other provinces or states probably have gone through, and it'd be interesting to see what devastation it had on their tourism industry in, in a, in a state or province that's really been hit hard.
And businesses.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Robin. Appreciate you being here today. Okay, operations and infrastructure update. Daryl, take it away.
Nick Roman, pointer.
Oh, we got it.
We got a show?
We got a show. I don't think it's a coincidence. I'm following a big discussion on muscles. So I'm gonna do a quick round the world update on some of the initial stuff. And I'm hoping you guys have that. You have to go across from the pump track, yeah. That's. Perdoro, that's total.
It's taking a while to open. Hey, Counselor Evans.
Hey.
I'm doing a lot of waiting, right? So, there's a.
Hmm, it's false, but the computers are all slow.
Right? Yeah, I'm screen.
Okay. So we've been to the industrial park. That's, that's our new building with the pad for now at the biofuel facility. I guess I'm done. There we go. So the auger, all the pieces we're waiting for are in place. Uh, propane is hooked up now. We had a number of defects that I was talking about last time. And they're getting resolved quickly. So the venting is done, and we've got our floor installed, uh, the casing around the doors. So the list of things to do is very, very small. And we are currently just finishing up the smaller things. We're firing up the, the boiler today. So today, we are gonna start warming everything up. And then uninterrupted heat should be available from September eighteenth on. So good news, sorry. We're gonna do a formal commissioning next week. We blew a ribbon cutting, so I'll keep you all posted on that. Uh, this will probably be the last I talk about curb of color, hopefully. I know we've talked about it a few times. It's in place, doing what it should. Uh, and so it did get paved. Everything looks good, and it's gonna be coming in under budget. So that's good news. Capella Water Street is, uh, the water main project, been a big one. Get that little icon to the foot of water.
Good job.
As you know, there was obviously a big traffic impact, still is. Uh, this was a really complicated tie-in that we, we got done last week. So on Thursday, we started in the morning, and it went all day long. And the work people on Capella were out of water till one in the morning, but it finally got done. But there was a cluster of three major valves at the highway side and at riverside, there were three more. We had a cluster of three at Shoe Swap. So to tie in that many big valves in a day is really, really pushing it. But we got it done. It was a long day. So the water line's going along the north side of Capella. We haven't been down that way. We've come across all kinds of things, like, I'm gonna cut it off, but there's another one here that was, just had two services from one side of the road to the other in a pipe that we didn't know, what is this? And, yeah, it's, it's just, it's been slow and bitty. These guys are, are plugging away. This is the highway side. This is the tie-in. We had to do a little creative, but making that stuff all fit. And that was part of our big day on Thursday, was this end and this end on Riverside, which, you know, we're allowed five degrees uh, to be, you know, within, within an alignment of five degrees and no more. So as you can see, we, we had to do a little more work there. Uh, this is the old water line that was existing, and we had to go in and do a repair, cause as we were going through, we were finding things that were leaking or cracked. So we were doing repairs on the old stuff while we were installing the new stuff. So it's just, it's been, it's been a bit of a cluster, but we're all tied in now. So, so that's the good news. There's twenty-seven services that are coming off that new water line. So I like to think the worst of it is behind us. Uh, so sixteen hours it took us. We did notices, uh, you know, really tough to nail down the times. It went longer than it, we, we hoped it would have, but, uh, we got it done. And, uh, we, we got the, uh, we got water out there for people as needed, and then we got restored after. So I want to just give a shout out to our utility team. They were on board through the process. They went home, left their work, they came back in the evening. Uh, it's not just a matter of tying in water line. You've got to get all the air out of the line. So it was a really complex plan to get all the air out of the line into a hydrant. So, uh, I've got like three pages of a work plan where they were just isolating one section at a time and getting the air out. And it was just coordinated effort. It was pretty impressive. Anyway, nine, nine new valves in place, and we got it done. This is the undercover biolog car. We're about now. I haven't seen John in it, but I. I have. Uh, for our main plant, we've been working behind the scenes quickly and as hard as we can. We're trying to get to the two thousand cubes that we are constructed and able to process. So our immediate task is to get a registration. It's always a lot of registration from the province. So that's a bit of a process. We've done the application, we've sent it in. We had to do an aphysia for discharge to the ground. That's all done, location maps, and then we paid our fees. The next step will be a pre-application meeting with the province. And that, we're told, will occur within ninety days of submitting, and so we submitted two weeks ago. So ninety days lasts two weeks. We, we should be meeting with them. And then at that meeting, we need to have these pieces in place. We're currently working on, uh, an operating plan right now that's formalized. uh, an operating plan right now that's formalized that will before them. And a contingency plan if something goes wrong, we have to have all those bases covered. So otherwise, we're in pretty good shape for that meeting to get that rolling. Uh, as promised, we'll do the pump track thing and then hopefully we've got Adam Dale ready to answer some questions. Uh, so we have done some background work. As you know, we did a community approval survey. We were seventy-seven percent in favor early on last year when we sent this out. Uh, we've got a preferred location selected now. We've done some survey work, some topographical mapping. We've got preliminary layout and design to show you. So I will be bringing this tonight. And if we have some discussion with Amadeo and we're feeling good about it, we can get this going and hopefully construction in the spring. Yeah, quick win. This was the initial site that we looked at. We met on June twenty-ninth, I believe it was, with the designer. We walked through this area. Really loved the layout. Really, uh, really public. Get into the trees, do a unique trap. So this would encompass like a kitty trap with a common starting area to for skill levels. This is kind of a rendering from a thousand feet up. And that's kind of the extent of the trees would be able to save. So over half the trees would stay in place. And it would be still visible from the highway. I really then felt really cool park setting. Which could really work in our favor and get on the circuit in the summertime. Cause there's not a lot of shaded tracks, is what I'm hearing. So it could be a really, really cool track. Not quite as easy to see through here, but that's kind of the view from the backside of it. Uh, some of the key points, as I mentioned, the survey was done. We can eat more than half the trees. Uh, we have this project identified in next year's budget. We, uh, we put some money aside for design this year and then for construction next year. We're close, so we're, we're not too far out. Their affiliation with UCI, which is Union of Cyclists International, will allow us some competitive racing on that track and get on the circuit. And then, like I said, all skill levels and it's a unique setting. We can start with spring. So this is just kind of the breakdown of where the costs would be. We still have to work through the landscaping. Whether we would take that component on in-house or we would farm that out. We'd have to look at that. But that's our estimated cost for that track. And that's a, that's a competitive track. And, um, it could be subject to changing a little bit by spring, but we'll work with the proponent to come in line with that. So hopefully Amadeo's available for some, some answers if you guys have any questions.
Thanks, Daryl. This is super exciting.
Yeah.
Um, Pam, did you have some questions?
I just want to say that it's, it is, it is really, I really liked, I really liked it. I like the, I like the fact that we've allowed for multiple skill levels. It's very impressive. I'm still, I, just looking at the design, I know you've fitted into that space. I'm just, I'm so happy that it fits into that space because it's also so very visible. Keeping the trees, that's awesome. Honestly, it is very exciting and I, I can't think of any reason why it won't be the best track around.
Awesome. Anyone else have any questions? Counselor McCabe?
Just, just a comment. Uh, impressive how staff has moved us along so quick. Um, usually things go pretty slow in government and this is, this is great. And I like keeping the trees. Uh, I don't know how that would work for spectators watching somebody around the track.
We, we have some of that incorporated in like spectator area and stuff.
Excellent.
Good job.
Counselor Rich?
Uh, through the chair. Um, Capella Street, it looks like it's going really well. I've heard, I mean, Counselor McCabe lives there, so he may be. I have friends there who, who are really impressed on the information and kind of how it's going and all that kind of stuff. Um, I don't know anything about pipes. What's the lifespan of these guys after we're done?
So we're going from AC pipe, which has got a lifespan that's, uh, typically fifty years, sixty years, but we're better than that. So they're saying maybe a little longer for some of those. They're approaching sixty, some of those AC pipes.
They're all gone.
Hey.
We're all gone by the time they break. Okay, good.
So it's good for eighty years.
Wow. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Bushell?
Yes, you're the chair. Good job, Daryl, on Capella and all everything, pump track and everything. But I did have, uh, some phone calls. Uh, I heard about our operations manager delivering water to all kinds of residents and, uh, I mean, big kudos. They were so impressed with all the information and everything. So thank you for you and your team for everything you guys have been doing. Great.
Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, I have a front row seat and it's been very well coordinated and, uh, yeah, when they had to stay until, I thought it was around eleven thirty. I think I had water back by, I thought eleven thirty.
Yeah, then we had to get the air to the line for an hour.
Oh, right. Um, yeah, and I thought, wow, cruisers staying up and city cruisers out there and contractors out there. So, yeah, good job.
Counselor Beach?
Um, I have just a comment to do with the boiler startup. Um, I'm just wondering, um, I know that we're, we've arranged for the, the wood supply for that, the, the fuel through, um, the company.
Through Fink?
Through Fink, yeah.
Yeah.
But I can't help notice all of the clearing that's going on on Leaf Road at South Squaw. And I'm thinking, are we gonna do, collect all that wood and do something with it? So that it doesn't get burned up into slash burns?
Through the chair. Good question. So for two years, Fink will run this plant. So we will, we will watch and see where they're sourcing their wood from. Uh, in terms of storing it for a long time, I, I don't think that's usually a very viable option. Because wood chips just burst into flames after a while. Um, we have reached out in the C F thirty. They are looking to create uh, a planing of the pallet program. It's a new initiative where they bring in pallets from everywhere and make a product out of that waste.
Okay.
And that to me would be a really good product, dry and clean.
Yeah.
So we're, we've sent a message off this week acquiring, uh, we could become part of that, so.
There's a lot there. I mean, right at Leaf Road, there's a lot of wood.
Yeah.
Cleared a huge area, so.
So Daryl, is the anchor tenant hooked up? So.
They're hooked up. Everything's physically hooked up. Like, they're probably firing up the boiler right now. Uh, whether that heat will get there today, I'm, I'm not sure. I'll, you know, I'll swing by tomorrow and see if they're actually warming things up yet. But they've said by Monday they will have unfettered.
Excellent. Good. Good job, Daryl. You're a great job. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, so I've got Adam Dale on. If there's any questions on the pump track? Good.
We're, Counselor Evans, yes or no?
I just love that.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just a dream come true for our town because that's such a popular thing. We're going to get so many people coming to town because of it. And it's, it's so great for the, the people of our town.
Fortunately, we own it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get going on it.
Wow.
Yeah.
Perfect. Super exciting. Okay, all right. Any, anything else for us? You want to share?
No, I guess just by way of the recording, I'll, I'll say thanks, Amadeo, for being on standby for us and we'll, uh, we'll talk soon.
Okay. Now we are going to move on and we have Carly here and she's going to give us a development corp update. Thanks, Carly.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. So here's the quarterly update from the Department of Tourism and Economic Development. Um, today, if you mind when I report the figures for the revenues, I'm writing to you. We're always three months behind. So this number passed first January today and it's, uh, just over forty-seven thousand. Um, the accommodator portion is thirty-one thousand three twenty-three, which is an eight point six three percent increase from year to date last year. And then the online accommodators is sixteen thousand four seventeen with the introduction of the short-term rental pilot. We're asking a fifty percent increase, um, in the revenue coming from our online accommodators. So I'm excited to see what June through August will showcase from year over year, just given they the smoke and the challenges that we did have. So it'll be interesting to see that. Uh, I have Camden Hancock for two days a week, for six weeks. And she produced good content reels of a water experience because that'll really help us edit the whole experience for the pilot, getting ready for the twenty twenty-four programming. Camden was, as the district staff know, an invaluable resource for me. It allowed me to get caught up on a lot of projects that were, um, you know, sort of set out to the side foundational projects because social media and the promotion of tourism is so, sometimes it can be very reactionary, but it is something where you have to spend a lot of time to make sure that you are on the ball. So, um, it definitely opened my eyes to the value of that position as a support in-house versus contracting it out. So I will be reviewing budgets, et cetera, going into twenty twenty-four and looking at the option of a uh, more full-time position to support on those sites for both tourism and economic development. We have some really strong social media stats from June to August. Uh, we did change our social media management. But between, uh, moxie marketing and Camden, we had another significant growth over the summer from both engagement and audience growth. Um, we did social media podcasts and some swag giveaways, which were well received. Our website performance was huge. It's been our biggest year yet in terms of like the, the two or three months that we had. So our average monthly visits were, uh, just over a thousand and page views. Average monthly page views are twenty-five hundred. So as we continue to develop video content and blog content, uh, we're starting to see a lot of people being driven to the website, which is exactly what we want. Because it gives us again that, um, foundation to promote bigger projects and bigger initiatives. Uh, the visitor experience guide was a huge success again this year. We got thirty-four hundred magazines out in market. We have, uh, six hundred magazines left and we haven't done our winter top-up for the accommodators. So we'll be happy with the, the feedback that we've been getting. And we, each year, we're getting better at how we develop it and when we get it out. So we'll become, uh, less time sensitive in terms of the grades that are inside. So we'll be able to get more reuse and, uh, capitalize on volume discounts and printing. Our, uh, community airport arrivals digital ads still have strong impressions. We change those out every month. We get input fully out every month. That sort of, uh, is seasonably relatable. We've recently added our QR code. So now I'll be tracking the clicks that come from that to give us a better measurement of people that are actually engaging with those apps. And we are, are going to look at the six-second video option. When I was at the arrival watching, there are a few companies that are using the six-second video. And it was pretty impactful. So I'm just looking to see how that might, we might do a test, um, trial of that instead of the scattered images. And then we had our Trans-Canada Highway billboard summer campaign. So then if you traveled, uh, I guess coming west from Alberta on the, the Trans-Canada. We've had the Eat Sleep Boat, Eat Sleep Truck, Eat Sleep, oh, that's a sea. And then we'll get into Eat Sleep Fish, Eat Sleep Sled, and then Eat Sleep Golf will start in our May. So, um, it's been a very positive campaign. Uh, the colors are really poppy. It's a very simplistic message with our logo standing out, um, in the center of it. So if you haven't seen it, uh, keep your eyes open. It's right across from the burner. Uh, the Geo Tour, so we launched ten new caches with a community event. We had forty groups that participated. And of those forty groups, only ten were local. So that was really, um, it, it impressed me the dedication of Geo Cachers from the greater or larger area, um, provincially and even interprovincial. That come out and really thrive on capturing and, and the status symbol of getting these digital cash prizes by completing the tours. So we upped the, um, the difficulty level, but it has changed into a very exciting, uh, tour for people to come. Total visitor day, which I just saw the report this morning. So, uh, year to date, sorry, we have five hundred and twenty-seven total visitor days. I need to figure out metrics on how we can track that from economic impact. In town, what they do say is it's about one point five average days for the length of our tour that someone would stay. So the goal with my tourism advisory committee will be coming up with a strong plan to promote off-season Geo caching through, um, enticing offers from accommodators and restaurants so that we can actually tie up some type of a poke or a, uh, a promo, um, word that we can go back to the accommodators and get that information to establish an actual metric around this. Uh, one, we created a thing and then a video shoot promoting Geo caching and it had twenty point six thousand views already. So that was, I believe that they went up to, they started ones and they actually went to our sick most big waterfalls and got some really beautiful coverage. I don't know if you guys can click on to the link, if it'll actually pull it up. Yeah, it's a, uh, might not allow you. Yeah. So this just shows, pardon me. Oh, yeah. Uh, it's at the bottom right. There's a video or there's. So if the snapshot, I get, he's got a huge, huge following. Shuwa tourism got behind and amplified the video. And little things like this that introduce this, um, experience essentially to a whole new group of, of people. So we're still trying to get the local community to get up and do it because lots of people are like, oh, we, we talk about it. We see, um, you know, information about it, but it's, it's a free and easy event that we're actively starting that everyone can get behind. So, uh, we'll continue to promote it in town with, um, small B and B events when we do more launching. So the next goal is to launch another ten, uh, caches in May or June. And those will be ones that will be able to tie in a lot more of our local businesses because there'll be water access on leave on the Eagle River. So you'll need to either rent a paddle boat or, um, or, or sort of paddleboard or get a canoe or a kayak. And then there'll be some of that we talked and started the conversation with the two, the household companies in town. Um, in terms of managing ones that are actually out on the water and they, we've got some buying, we just need to really flesh up what that looks like. So, uh, again, the more difficulty you have, the, the more enticing it is for the hardcore Geo Cachers to come to town and spend money and have like a day and a evening, et cetera. If you've been walking around town, you might have seen that we do have our six tourism peonies installed. High Mountain Grace has donated, um, all of the posts for us. So we'll be doing, uh, I'm getting little wood burned plaques for them to put onto the actual peonies and then we'll do a social media post. There's two at Main Street Landing, two at Beach Park and two on the High Highway ninety-seven Trail. I did get them put on a Luma panel, so we're very easily able to reskin them if the information needs to change. So there's other opportunities. Uh, the yearly event calendar will get changed every year. But if we do need to, uh, give you a caution where somebody comes to us with some really key information that might make more sense in certain locations, it's a really cheap option. But they, if you haven't seen them, they look really good. I really appreciate Daryl and his crew for getting them up. Um, they're, they're awesome. They're just like what I thought they'd be. Um, the wildfire travel ban and impact conversations and support. So I know that you guys have probably all heard of this as business owners. Some of you were impacted. We've been in constant conversations with B C Economic Development Association, T O D A, just T O D A. Tourism Association, Destination B C, Shuwa Tourism and other levels, trying to figure out what the actual impact was from the August nineteen travel ban and emergencies, our state of emergency announcement and how that needs to be addressed for future. So again, it's an ongoing conversation. Uh, there's been some funding right now that isn't put forth to do some marketing plans. There's a portion of us that recognize and have voiced that our season is over in term, you know, in sick news. It's the major season, the major revenue building season for a lot of our businesses. Was kind of, you know, those last two weeks was very hard on them. So we're hoping to put a portion of any of the funding that's coming towards, um, you know, staff incentives, helping businesses to keep and maintain staff instead of having to lay people off. There's a whole bunch of conversations. There's a whole bunch of conversations around marketing plans and maybe shipping them into the spring to welcome people back to ensure that there's no real fear about coming to the area and booking um because it seems to happen year over year. So again, a a lot of the conversation is around communication and how we better manage that from a tourism perspective. So uh as this continues to develop, I will keep everybody up to date, but I have been in regular contact with our businesses trying to understand you know, what they would like to see moving forward. On this, uh one of the initiatives that we are going to do for the saves of temper or help encourage fall visitation is that hashtag real time. So if anybody's out and about and you are able to take a picture like on a day like today down at the beach or on one of the trails, all you do is you post it and you put hashtag real time. And what that does is they collect all of the photos so that they want to do a big marketing push next year. So when people are looking to come to Sycamore, instead of calling and expecting that our front desk uh receptionist or the hotel accommodators or whether people are in the future, they can say go on a hashtag real time and we can hopefully see what it looks like on a day-to-day basis in each of its regions across B C. Um some of the upcoming initiatives that we're looking at is Darryl talking about with the U C I pump trap. The dates that finally got solidified that I will be submitting, providing uh approval of the trap happens, will be a September seventh and eighth uh competition in twenty twenty four and then June twenty first, twenty second, twenty twenty five, which will be, you know, it'll be a June date moving forward. Uh the reason for the June date, A, it will always keep us ahead of when the finals are uh globally. So when we go um in twenty twenty five, sorry, we couldn't do a September date anyways because I think Sweden or some European country has it. So we would have to push it in August, which defeats the purpose of filling our beds and off-season and really promoting Sycamore outside of the July and August. So that'll be what we're submitting uh September thirtieth, uh both uh mountain bikes and cycling Canada and battle solutions at U C I. I'm really excited about seeing this application come in. So I'm I'm hopeful for a positive result, providing approval tonight. Uh for event support, we've got Monkey Fest coming up this weekend, the Slutsup Music Film Festival on National Sled Day, which is October twenty ninth. And then the Nathaniel Jim Rice Ball Classic Derby on November fifth, which is happening down uh to boat launch. We've got our B C Bird Trail, the Host Month, which will happen at the end of September, basically encouraging the September and May travelers to come and birdwatch in a corridor from Salmonar to Sycamore. What that will do is it'll allow us to partner with the Naturalist Society and Salmonar to look at opportunities to create or develop uh bird viewing locations and it will be integral. We got on this early because when the rail trail does happen, there'll be a lot of key viewing points for us from a Sycamore standpoint to draw people here, to add another activity or layer activity to that initiative. Uh the S P R data program, which is an accommodator program, that'll be revisited. As I mentioned, we have our tourism advisory committee strategic planning session to develop the M R E T twenty twenty four line for Sycamore. Uh that plan will be June, November thirtieth. We've got our all marketing campaigns, which is called Travel Now and Save September. So that's gonna be all about the colors and experiences in Sycamore. And really trying to urge people to come back and uh check it out, check this out in the fall. Uh we are, we sent out an email about a restaurant initiative partnership with Shuchop Tourism, Sades and the North and South uh chambers for November uh restaurants. Essentially, it'll be like a, I hate using the word passport, but there'll be a bunch of restaurants in the Shuchop that will create the same dish and they'll put their roast on it. So they're just determining from feedback from the restaurants, it'll be chili or stew. Kind of like Nelson's Burger of the Month, where you go around to restaurants and you pick your favorite burger. This will be a a Shuchop initiative where people can go pick up their their passport and then they'll get prizes based on how many of the restaurants they visit to try, let's say it's their chili, and then vote on it. So again, it's just to encourage on a really slow month for restaurants, that visitation and centering. And then I'll be heading to the T O D A Tourism Summit and taking tickets at the end of October. Any questions on tour?
Counsel, any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Bushel.
Through the chair. Um yeah, I just wanted to say great job, uh Carly. You know, just everything you're doing is uh really, really stands out and you're doing a great job. Really wanna say thank you about that. Uh the kiosks are so informative and uh they're really attracting, you know, you know, they're very visually attracting. People draw to them and uh they look great. So I I just think they did a great job on those. Um also the viewing, I'm not a bird watcher, but I do like to walk. And if you go to Salmonar, they have all their elevated walkways and it could tie in, you know, depending on what happens with Old Town when we do some exchange there. We have a lot of uh land on that peninsula that goes out alongside the Eagle River. And that is actually an old bird sanctuary to begin with. And is there any way we could start looking at maybe applying or, you know, working with um somebody in their province and applying to put in like, you know, I know they used uh piling, they use posts, I think at the uh the ones in Salmonar, but now with the new technology, you could use like screw-in pilings and, you know, that will rot and you get those above the uh the flood plain and we could add our own little boardwalk and tie it in and work with Salmonar. It's a it's a great drawing drawing card. Um because I never really saw, you know, I've walked it lots, but I've never really saw it from above. And we just got back. We were on the rail, the Rocky Mountaineer Trail from Vancouver to Banff in the last couple of days. And you go along there and every, we're the only Canadians on board and everybody else was from England Ireland and they were just blown away with the Shuchop. Like everybody you talked to, they couldn't believe the boardwalk for the for the uh the bird sanctuary and the the households. And it was, it was, I I was just in awe just to see so many people talk about the Shuchop on that entire trip. They just kept talking about the Shuchop, even when we got to the hotel last night. So it's pretty cool.
Yeah, so through the chair, that is the goal to try and find um what that's gonna look like. We had engaged the help of the Shuchop uh or Salmonar National Society and they because there is a little bit about three hundred and six, I think, to the birds in our area. So it was kind of a no-brainer. If you go to B C Bird Trail, there's a lot of communities that have created what they they're calling out there. So we're in a development year in terms of uh establishing our Shuchop outpost. And I think that there's an opportunity to include, you know, heading more out to Area E, heading east, I guess, because North Fork Line, we're targeting right now will be Old Town Bay and the Riverfront Nature Park. And that'll be the ones that we can easily promote now and have people go up and see. So I I love the idea working and talking with Diaz or whoever's in charge of establishing those trails and finding some funding that we could, because it's gonna be key. If we can build it, they will come. And they've got a lot of money. There's a a group that has a lot of disposable income and they travel in the season that we need people staying here. Darryl.
Yeah, that's awesome. Councilor Evans.
Hey, I just want to let you know I had a friend come from Kelowna to take his girlfriend out on a date to go geocaching in Sycamore. And he stayed the night and was in town all day and I know he spent money. So that's cool. My, this second one's question is hashtag R E A L, real time?
Sorry, R E E L.
R E E L, real, gotcha. Thanks.
Yeah. Councilor Rich.
Uh through the chair, two questions with the real, like, so real time's coming up because I've actually had, um I've had five families just that I know that have canceled because of the smoke and have gone to the island or gone elsewhere. Um Saturday I got a call from one of them that said, how smoky is it there? And I'm like, it's plus twenty five and gorgeous, you know, snap of the leg. Um do we have anything, kind of now people are still kind of moving, but they're still scared to come here. Do we have, is there a way to send people somewhere to say, hey, it's, we're not choking to death?
Yeah, the best place to send them right now is is to T O D A, it's a Tonsen Economic Tourism Association, their social media, or Hello B C. Those are the two that are spearheading the regional development of the assets. So I talked with Morgan from Shuchop Tourism last night and our specific travel to Shuchop, come visit Shuchop. Those assets should be, we thought they were gonna be here yesterday or today. So we'll be able to push them out. Um you know, you can always send them to Explore Sycamore. So we're gonna try and you know, share as much information as we can about coming here. In terms of an actual like immediate, no, it's something that um I have, I've chatted with Diaz about getting a similar trail cam setup at the beach park next year through M R E T funding. So it'll look out on the water and people can pull it up anytime and we can use that for content development. So that's gonna be something that we're going to talk about in this strategic plan session that we can just then send people to.
Oh, that'd be fun. And this is my question, which has nothing to do with smoke. Um but are we targeting dog people? And I know everybody's sick of me talking about dog people, but there's a lot of money. I traveled the Oregon coast because I can take my dogs. And actually, one of the people that canceled are from the island and they were coming here because I was like, our restaurants are dog friendly. We have one of the best dog beaches in probably B C and I go to a lot of them. Um are, you know, we have great walking trails on leash. Uh are we targeting these folks? Because they have money.
Through the chair, we, starting next week, we have Camden's actually created an entire Did You Know campaign about Sycamore being dog friendly. So yeah, each day, so we'll have it pushed out. Sorry, I keep tapping and I know that's second word. Um we'll have that so that it can be pushed out and shared with uh, we'll be tagging a lot of our local cattle associations and dog. We we've talked to them about doing um events in Sycamore. So we are on their radar whether or not they choose to to do something here, but we'll push that information out for sure.
Awesome. Okay. Um thank you so much for that part, Carly. Excellent job that you're doing. Keep up the good work.
Uh okay, so for economic development, we did our business walks. Uh since our last party, so we had twenty one businesses visited and we got some amazing feedback. Um through that, actually, over the last couple of days with the emails that I've been sending out, some local business owners are actually getting together and they want to come and say and figure out how they can be more proactive about sending the message out and talking about Sycamore's just open, you know, come shop here. So now they want to be part of the conversation versus just waiting for us, you know, to push out information and see how we can get a much stronger voice as a collective community. So um April from Willow is gonna be spearheading that and and getting the business owners that are interested. They're gonna come to the death report offices and we're gonna lay out a plan as to you know, how digitally and socially we can actually amplify that. We are open and talk about some solutions uh to to battle the communication that Sycamore's on by and go come and and all of that. Because I think that there's a there's a bigger conversation to be had, but locally, I think there's a lot that we can do to support our businesses and find solutions for them so that they're, you know, not feeling so um like they're battling this communication on their own and trying to tell their people to sell them. Uh the S C B C Building Economic Capacity Grants, we were awarded that um in June. It is going to be used to create a community profile investment package for um the the death portment to use. It'll be a digital one as well as a print one for an investment. Uh estimated inflation will be December twenty twenty three. It'll have a relocation element. So I'm gonna help uh with this beautiful document with the chamber for when they get people coming. It'll be two-sided. So one side will be investment, one side will be community profile slash relocation guide. So it'll be a dual-purpose um a dual-purpose document, sorry, that will help showcase and tell the story of Sycamore. Uh the U S C C website is, has been fully updated thanks to Camden. She went through a fine tooth comb and and updated all of the uh links and everything that was there that were kept giving us errors. So now, please, I encourage you to all go and check it out. And I'd love feedback. We're gonna, the goal is over the fall to get a uh newsletter that will tie into that, uh quarterly newsletter from a development corporation standpoint. We're building a social media presence. We've got the Workforce Roundtable Committee that's still going. And then the Rural or the Immigration Pilot. Our local Shuchop coordinator changed over and um we're gonna be setting up a meeting once I understand who's gonna be taking over our local businesses in terms of the outreach for the Rural Northern Immigration Pilot, but we did have this accepted activated. So it's a a positive program. And I believe going into next year with the staffing and the labor shortages that they will still let us keep this out on. Upcoming initiatives, we've got the Shuchop Recovery Task Force. So because of what happened out um north-south, Shuchop, John, um John Reed from Shuchop Economic Development Society has created a development corporation recovery task force. So it's just in its infant stages. We're looking at it again from a business support uh lens and then they'll be creating subcommittees. So as soon as I think we've had our, we've had two meetings. So I will update once we have some sort of firm direction on that. There's a uh article that I'm working on getting the information for about women owning business. So Sycamore has um an extraordinary amount of women-owned entrepreneur businesses and uh Salmonar Observer has identified that and would love to do a story on it. So I'll be working with work ethic to push that out from a development side or from a business side. So I think it's a really cool fact. Uh business marketing sessions from the feedback we got from the business walk, they'll be running uh free business sessions for our local business community. Digital presence, e-commerce branding and marketing, grant writing and succession planning, where the three, if three is identified by business owners uh specifically succession planning that they needed help with. So uh during Small Business Week, October fifteenth to the twenty first, they'll be running those sections. The B C twenty five plus games are coming to Salmonar next year. It will potentially be to begin after the uh proposed dates for the pump trap event. So we could have an event Monkey Fest happen. So September next year is looking like it could be a really solid uh month for for Sycamore. So we'll be going over the accommodations and amenities plan with uh the development or the save, sorry, staff person for that games. And then uh we were approached by Natalie from uh Natalie Brussels at Sycamore about exploring completing a boat industry economic impact study. It kind of ties into what you guys are talking about with economic impacts of invasive species. It could be all wrapped in, but I'm currently looking at grant funding for that. And I think again, that'll be a word of conversation, but it's something that really could be um helpful tool for us.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Bushel.
Uh Carly, on that boating industry economic impact study, um one thing we, you know, we um not only the boating, but just the the businesses themselves, we look at the, and I think I brought this up the last time. Um most of our uh like our boating businesses and stoneville business owners are all at the retirement age. And that's gonna be really devastating when we lose and they all retire. And that's within the next year, year or two. So that's, that's really uh, that could be really devastating for a boating community. So that could be one, but I'll figure the boat wraps, you know, the boat launches. And I see we got a letter tonight for tonight's uh meeting, uh somebody concerned about a boat launch. Very, very, very important that we include the, you know, and 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 it's something to promote too, that we have so many boat launches to, you know, compared to like Salmonar or Kelowna or Vernon and and it could really, you know, really assist. Well, we have, we have to be able to service them for sure. Good point.
Councilor Beach.
Through the chair, um yeah, I I like the the plans to do uh the uh to explore an impact study on all of this stuff, um the boating. Uh we could tie it into uh the water, the lake, being a natural asset. So I'm, I have been a proponent suggesting that we need to place a dollar value on our not natural assets, which are our lakes and our river and our forests. And that would be one way we can do it is to do impact studies on the economy that comes off of it, right? So I like that very much.
Good idea. Uh Councilor McCabe.
Yeah, the last boat, they're saying thing of economic impact study on boating. Why not expand that to sledding and and quadding? Um every, everything tours do to take advantage of our natural environment. Like why limit it to boating? And like Councilor Bushel said, I helped in that business walk. We did some walks and and yeah, there's nobody uh in the near future going to be to maintain uh our toys, our boats, our sleds, our quads, our sea dews, our snowmobiles. Um yeah, all all the maintenance people to maintain our toys aren't going to exist in Sycamore in a couple of years. So I think that's a big issue. It's a potential to encourage a new business to come into town or take over existing. Uh but proactive would be good.
Through the chair, with the succession planning, we're bringing in to the help of Community Futures, a very top-notch um instructor, which will provide the service to train. So a lot of these providers that are thinking about getting up the next year, it'll give them the tools to actually figure out how to move their business. Because I think from what you guys probably heard and what some of the other directors heard is they're not even really sure how to take the next step to market their business, to look what the, they've done it for so long that they don't even know what the proper steps would be to get the best value out of their business and make it a seamless transition. So um I'm really hoping that they take advantage of the fact that we're investing in this. Because you're right, it's, it will be catastrophic if we lose all those businesses. And with um with regards to the economic impact study, there is a slide one that's let's say, we said, we do have an impact study for snowmobiling, but I think it's a good conversation to have about just the entire tourism industry, um you know, the four seasons that we have. Because it is, you know, it is so much more than just, just boating.
Anyone else? Um thanks, Carly. And I think the uh succession planning and just targeting some of those businesses that are thinking about retiring, I think that's a, that's a really good idea. All right, anyone else? Thanks, Carly. Great job. Okay. All right, the housing strategy implementation update, secondary dwelling initiative. Sarah, do you want to take it away?
For presentation, sorry.
Yay. Uh so. The presentation that uh was shared with the client development should be last week as well. And we must be able to think about the role today. Uh next slide, please.
Sarah, can I get you to speak up, please?
You hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Um so this is an update on the activities of the housing committee and. Specifically, the secondary dwelling initiative, not a custom strategy. So um back in April, uh the end of that month, uh the district issued an a call for expressions of interest. Um to provide plans for secondary dwelling units that the district would then provide as part of a proof plan library. Um to help support homeowners in adding this type of that belong to their previous properties. Uh so that call ended at like it closed at the end of July, received ten submissions, which we're really excited about. Um signals met the criteria of the E O I. Um so the housing committee met uh August tenth and twenty ninth to go over. Uh the submission and some really good discussions were had. Um ended up having Brian Anderson, who made new homes come in. And share information with the housing community. We spoke for a good hour or so after a talk thing. Uh this is what we're doing. This is fantastic. Um so the committee did shortlist those six. Uh in terms of, you know, their work to provide recommendations to homeowners. Um and those were the natural points, local projects and uh McDermid construction. And what I have on slide here are examples of secondary laws that that they've done in the past. They would actually, you know, uh in the case of adaptive, it would want something from their current um. Collection of plans. Uh the other two would be designing something specifically for us. Next slide. So in terms of how the committee worked through um this mission. Uh we took a look at what they were actually proposing to include as a skill of work. In terms of preparing those plans for the district if they were ordered to contract. Um so when going through them all, we're about eleven uh different uh items that were included in their school. So, you know, our red stuff works. I don't necessarily get all of these. Um but a few of them were things like, are they going to do a site study, like look at our town site and see kind of how development has already gone, where our house is currently held, there's lots, you know, how how are they accessed? Um doing scoping meetings with staff and stakeholders um and, you know, appropriate preparing concept options that. Um could be shared and perhaps we could use to do a survey to engage the public and before actually having run, you know, selected which set you want them to prepare plans for. For example. So three kind of rose to the top in terms of just looking at what they were offering in their scope of work. Um that was housing, McDermid and Mootum. Mootum was set aside because of the cost they had, about twelve thousand. Or it's a movie. For one plan, which would have been all we could have reported. Um so the show courage shortlist. Is adaptive, who initially um, you know, their their proposal was really high. Um but the housing committee. Really loved the idea that um, you know, someone could either choose to stick build a unit in their yard or they could have something that came in. In panels or a complete unit that they could just pop in their yard. Um they really loved that idea where people would have that freedom of choice. So we did, we did go back to adaptive and asked them like, is there something better you can do? And they they came in on par with kind of where who's are currently sitting. So. Adaptive, housing and McDermid are currently the the top three in terms of what the committee is considering for recommendation to council or not for can choose to do. From there. Um but in terms of adaptive, so so they are a technician, an architectural technologist. That can do design, draft it. Um the sort of lead sets of construction plans, it would be about six thousand dollars. Um a royalty of five hundred dollars. So that's an, that's a cost to the end user. To use the plant. So they would get the pre-approved plants from the district, but we'd be collecting this five hundred dollars that we've never missed to the designer. Um in terms of any revisions, anything necessary to to help a unit fit a particular site. Um that's currently to be determined um because that isn't a service they're offering. Um but there were some other ones that. We couldn't give to it that could offer that service or, you know, folks can find their own designer as well. That's the one. Housing, housing is an architecture of a Victoria, that is out of Revelstoke, by the way. Um and for, you know, this is within our budget. So our of the housing, we have a housing budget on there. About a thousand dollars that we're looking at using for this. Um so they come in just under that budget. Um there's some stars on there for a reason. Um. We could get three designs for that, um five hundred dollar royalty. And in terms of costs for giving a minor uh adaptations, we could put this site. Uh and this is actually, it's actually above the arm, making it fit the site. This is like minor revisions for. Certain individual a homeowner, like changes they want to see that film personal taste. So the star on here, the third two on a total pot, they'll actually include minor changes to the plans. Um without any additional cost, that's that's covered in the royalty. Um so like if a roof line used to change slightly or used too long or something like that, minor things get that the site. They will do that without any additional cost. To the homeowner. Um and then there's three starting on royalty, and that's because they're offering the use of each. Plans, which will have three sets of plans totally different. Those can be used three times without a royalty. So they're they're offering that out of their own pocket, um which is pretty cool. Um and then McDermid, McDermid is out of Salmon Arm. Uh and you may be familiar with them. They do a lot of um custom builds around the shoe swap area. Uh and they do have some pretty cute um examples of secondary splits they've done in their self plan submissions. Uh so six thousand three planets, real tune would be a thousand dollars. Uh and then there's the. It's, you know, on par with how in the demo. Um. And so those wouldn't be anything extra with that. Um so in terms of having something that's a different out of the three. Uh adapted because they are very uh environmentally complex. Uh and in terms of saving energy, that kind of thing, their buildings come, like if you were to buy one of their buildings, they're already set qualified. Um. So in terms of getting plans, they're going to be more on par with that. I think a lot of the differences has to do with the kind of technology that's used in buildings. Um but the others in that they will be providing is a draft energy audit, which is something that would be a combination of that with me and B C. Um. In some cases, it is something that you'll have to submit with your building from an academic. So that is a a value added bonus for our. So in terms of follow up, uh the housing committee will be meeting again in early October. And we'll bring more information back to the committee of the whole if we're going to counsel for hopefully for some direction that's to forward the contract to.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. Any questions, anyone? Counselor Rich.
Through the chair. I just um want to thank Sarah because we've been really pushing her. Uh housing committee is like. Really like, we're going to get this done now. Um so we we our timelines, we've tried to. Kind of tighten stuff up and put more meetings in. So, yeah, I really appreciate that because it's been, there's been a lot of questions and, you know, getting Bayview in and and having Brian there just answering questions for us. Was really huge. Um we did go back. Um. So budget was a big thing on this because uh we did have some financial, you know, we have to stick to budgets and buying this, but. I think with the three that we did pick, it wasn't just because of budget. It it was because they suited our community and and what we're trying to do here. Um the best and uh. Yeah, I just, I think we've done a really good job narrowing it down and and uh we'll see what the next meeting brings. But thank you for putting all that work in.
So thank you. Counselor McCabe.
Yeah, same as Counselor Rich. Um. We decided we wouldn't use uh. A local as a criteria, but it ended up. With Salmon Arm as one and and Revelstoke as one anyhow, without using that as a waiting cri- waiting criteria for shortlisting. So I was I was happy that we ended up with two locals, one from Salmon Arm, one from Revelstoke. And um I'm just happy with the total response that we got from the expression of interest. And I think we're going to have a good a library plan uh once this comes to council and council makes a decision on. I'm thinking maybe pick two of the proponents or and as far as the budget goes, um. I don't know, quite a few councils ago, I think it was myself that said, we don't even have a line item for housing in our in our in our budget. So. Council agreed and we just Kelly just added a line item and we just randomly said. Oh, we could, uh let's throw ten thousand bucks in there. So there's not a lot of thought that went into that ten thousand dollars. It was just a marker, if you will. And if if we need, uh if council decides we might need fifteen thousand or something, uh we'll have to. Approach Kelly on her expertise and her stock drawer.
Pass the stock drawer. Bianca.
On my call.
Yeah, Bianca's stock drawer now. I'm glad we're any any cons or any concerns or comments from the planning um many, no?
No, we think they've done a great job and you guys, you know, did your homework and yeah, I mean, we all agree.
Excellent. All right.
Good job, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah, too. I forgot to mention, yeah.
All right, proposed revitalization tax exemption areas. Bianca, take it away.
Yes, so this is just uh an extension of our last conversation, confrontation, but the last committee of the whole. Um. So I've done a breakdown of where the rebates are at and I've included um. Based on our discussion class meeting. Um so yeah, we could just go through each. Validation area and just talk about them. Um sport cup, I would commercial, it was decided at the last meeting. We're good with getting rid of that one. So that one no longer there. That'll be. Um we have a town center. So if we go down, um I've gotten Steffi to revise the map. Um breaking off Riverside and condensing Town Center to the just the development permit area. So it pretty much starts around where we are at, going down that area there. Um. Made that revision to the map. We were talking about the last council meeting, uh last committee of the whole, um if we want to. Um make this a larger incentive area. So changing right now, it's a hundred percent municipal exemption for years one to five. And then it's gradual um up to ten years. So that's something we could consider. We want to change it gradual or leave it as is. Um and then also I just highlighted down below because we were discussing. What can be built commercially in these zones? So I've included uh. Heard our bylaw a thousand. These are the different um zones within the town center. And if there's anything on there that we want to not include as eligible for the bylaw. Um so with that. Oh, well, we could talk first maybe about this top though. Assessment value, are we okay with keeping ten year, five year, a hundred percent, five year gradual?
Counsel, comments? Counselor McCabe.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Like I said. Any other comments?
No. Counselor Bushel.
Yeah, no, I think you've done a good job laying that out, Bianca, the way you you've done it there. I I wasn't, I was a little, you know, I know we're trying to keep our zones in our in our zones because we've. Um but it's kind of like. On Main Street, you know, like Rakesh and Sea Dog. I'm not sure. I haven't looked at Sea Dog, the Sea Week, Sea Dog Highway Commercial. Or they are, are they Town Center? And like Rakesh's, I know he's getting ready to a fair. Um new development in in time. And then again, on the other side, we talk about Finless and. Those lots being so long, there are, we classify those highway commercials and not Town Center, right?
Yeah.
So just to be aware.
Yeah. And and Rakesh, if he were to, I think, like expand the motel and stuff, he could go under the hotel. Um because we talked about boutique hotels, we brought that down um later on to twenty five units instead of fifty. So that would be a potential there if. To expand the motel and stuff for that property. Um Sea Dog. I think is a highway commercial and it might just be.
Well, this, so there's the town, there's a massive town center development permit area, but it's got a bunch of different like. And this is the true town center. So we previously had a much larger map that was at our last meeting. So. It doesn't, as long as it ties to the O C P's, it's a big area. Or we could drill it down. We could do two of the areas, but we, when we talked at the last meeting, it was, we just said, okay, well, let's just. Do our true town center. Let's not give away too much, right? But really, it's up up to council if they want to, if we want to look at that. Land use map and find another.
Counselor Evans, oh, sorry.
Through the chair. Um now, can we expand Town Center if if they're going to go on? From Vinlessin towards the highway, if that could all be developed uh one day. Into into something good, would would that not be in Town Center as well if?
Um on the last way, the whole, you have that other map.
The other map.
That's a nice blazer.
Yeah, it's. That's my presentation last.
Presentation.
Yeah.
Was that the committee at all?
Yeah, yes.
We're still getting comments, getting other stuff up.
I think too, if we want to expand the area. Or we want to be more selective, we could also look at. Looking at the permitted uses.
Mm hmm.
Because that might like strategically there.
Right. So if we're going to chop it up, it has to be like, if we want to do this, then it has to be the the red and the. Right? We can't just go, oh, well, this one and these ones, right? It has to tie to the O C P. Or we could pick a use that we want to support within it, right? We're just trying to kind of streamline in a bit and be a bit more strategic in terms of where we. Put it, because then if we want this Rakesh's property, then we have these other properties included in them as well, right?
Counselor Evans and then Counselor Bushel.
Yeah, thanks for the continuous for a second. I'm just thinking like if in some of the poor area, let's say somebody wanted to put a. Hotel, what would be the process we'd have to do to, I mean, it's essentially Town Center. I mean, if it was close enough to the red. Is what I'm thinking, like, uh I I don't know where the delineation is between highway, commercial and. Town center. If we had a hotel that, let's say, somebody wanted to buy the. Boat parking next to the hub and they wanted to put a nice hotel there.
Hotel already gets a tax exemption anywhere in the country. So hotel already would would have. Doesn't matter what area.
Or stores or anything like that, yeah.
Stores would be different.
Yeah. Okay.
Counselor Bushel.
Yeah, I was just kind of thinking on for planning and and whether it ha- have ever does happen and they split those lots up and they do divide them in half. You could maybe then put the outside on highway commercial and the inside could. Form the town center. But I did notice on our on our mapping that Sea Dog was uh Town Center. And so was Rakesh's Town Center. So I just, you know, I I just wanted to make note of that, that that is Town Center on our map. When you, when you, when you highlight our maps.
So there's a gateway Town Center, there's Town Center, there's. Highway Commercial, Town Center. It's all called the Town Center Development Permit Area. So that's, but then they've got. Other little names within them. And so that's why with our original one. Did this whole red area because that's our Town Center Development Permit Area. But then we've got, yeah, other areas within it. So we're trying to kind of. Not just make. So we're trying to kind of not just make it so big, right? So that's probably why it says Town Center, because it's in the Town Center Development Area, but then there's areas within that area.
Counsel McCabe.
I like the way you, the office better broke out there, like, like I think what we asked for actually. Uh, yeah, like that, keep simple. And then later you're going to explain down, down Riverside, what it would look like. So, yeah, I like the way you got it broken. And for the graduation on, on that one, first five years and then graduate down for the last five years. I, I think that's a good setup and I think we should approve that. I have a, I've always questioned why, you know, on, on the north side of Finlessen, why we call that highway commercial when there's no highway access?
Good point.
Uh, Ministry of Transportation won't allow access anywhere off the highway, except possibly Gilley Current Access, that would have to create a frontage road to run all the way along. So, you know, right now, there's no uh, well, highway commercial, but there's no access to the highway. So isn't that a little bit of an oxymoron?
Kelly?
Um, probably, but what I, so within this next year, let's say with twenty twenty-four, we'll probably be looking at our OCP and where these areas are will be modified. And then at that point, we can amend our revitalization tax exemption maps to align with our new OCP. Because these, these lines were made up in twenty sixteen, right? They can move however we want them to move, right? That's our OCP, what, what we really want our future of our, our community to look like, right? So it, it, even though this is a bylaw and we're adopting it and we're changing it, if we can amend a tax exemption by law, it's really easy to change. It just needs two council meetings. It's not like all the other ones. So the OCP is really where the fundamental questions come into play. And then we can update and amend our bylaw, the tax one, to, to mirror those ones, right?
Yeah, thank you. Counsel Bate.
Um, this might be a dumb question, but, um, by the time we do all that, um, we've got, we've got normally building parking lots on, all along the highway.
Eric.
Um, if that continues, can we change our OCP and he has to do something else with them? Move the lines and we actually can develop decent Town Center businesses? I, I just don't, I don't know if we leave it and he develops all this stuff. What can we, can we do anything with that by changing the OCP and?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Well, that's up to him and whether he wants to develop something. What's, right now, we've got a bunch of great permitted uses in, in, on those properties. It's whether he wants to develop them or not. Oh, see, we can't force him to develop anything.
Wow.
Authoritative.
Uh, I think what Counsel Beech is referring to is the same scenario we have on fifty-four, five four or five fourteen, where that fellow is grandfathered and he can do what he started his business to do, even though we were changing the zoning, it says it can't be done, grandfathered, he can do it. So uh, I think that's what Pam wanted to, if Mr. Yarmely does whatever he wants there and then we change the zoning and I think I wanna keep what happened. And he can say, you know, because it was zoned that way when I did it and it's grandfathered and so it's through you.
Exactly.
And the zoning is different than the OCP, so, so. And, yeah. Right now, some of these are already good, so zone country residential.
That's good.
And this is where we don't necessarily have to make a decision today. You know what? Maybe we go through them all and then we can, you can have some time to think about it and then we can do another follow-up. Because I mean, these are big decisions and I think if we can go, yes, these ones for sure, and these two, maybe we still think about it for a little bit and then we can come back again, that's fine.
I agree. Okay, Bianca, keep going.
So Riverside Commercial, um, we were looking at a new zone here on Riverside, um, at last meeting, I was thinking, oh, less of an extension compared to the Town Center revitalization by law. So I kind of put some examples of some options. So we could keep it the same as Town Center, um, or we could do a five-year, a hundred percent exemption. Or a five-year graduated or I'm open to other suggestions, but those are just um, some examples. And then I've also included the permitted uses, um, I think Malcolm said that someone could put a chicken.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, you can have a chicken, you can, I think you can have chickens.
I think you have chicken soup maybe, but I don't think you can have it commercially from what I'm looking at. Any uses there if we wanna like fix any of them from exemption permitted use.
Go ahead, Counsel Rich.
Through the chair. So yeah, our local, uh, commercial zonings, um, there's a couple that, um, kind of sparked my interest. Um, pet daycare indoor, uh, so again, when it comes to animals, I ran one in Vancouver, which is obviously a different population than us. And we had a hundred and seventy-seven dogs a day in an indoor eight hundred square foot unit. Um, so unless that there's, I mean, honest to goodness, even if you had ten dogs indoor, the amount of noise and having to walk and being able to maintain a yard and the smell. Um, and I'm a huge animal proponent. I do not think that should be downtown because it could get out of hand very, very quickly. So, so I'm not big on that one. And then the other thing that, that on this one that, uh, kind of quick my interest is a mobile vending. So we're asking businesses to come in and upgrade and pay rent and, and, um, have employees and, and stick to our, our town themes. And then if we let people come in on a permanent, you know, coming to the market with a, a taco stand for a day is one thing. But when these guys pull up, um, and spend the summer and they're competing against, um, local businesses who are, who are employing and, and maintaining buildings and, and paying year-round taxes. I personally have, I don't think that's, that's fair, um, you know, they pay how much to have a food truck or a mobile thing, I think it's a hundred twenty-five bucks or something, uh, to get a, a food truck, like food cart, um, license. Um, and I don't, uh, feel like that should be a permanent thing, like that you could come for three months and set up your food truck or your, or you're selling, um, your, your little clothes stand or whatever. When we are encouraging businesses to come and pay their rental spaces and, and stay within our community year-round.
Counsel Evans.
Cool, uh, through the chair, I'll push back a little bit on that. I'm thinking, um, of Ryan Mize, teacher at the high school. He manages those ice cream places at the end of the street, Johnny's, I think it's called. And employs five students from the high school for their summer job to run it. And maybe what we need to do is increase the cost to those vendors to make it a little more equitable with, um, with other businesses. Um, but it is local people in a lot of these instances, so just a thought.
And I just wanted to point out, there is no tax exemption for a mobile vending unit. So we're, like, that's like a permitted use within the zone, which is a totally different discussion in terms of our zoning, but there is no, because it's, you have to can actually build something to get the tax exemption. You have to have like, increase the assessed value and be, there's no building for a mobile unit, so there would be no tax exemption for a mobile unit regardless. From a tax perspective, for the tax exemption by law. But we can definitely look at our, our permitted uses in our zoning and look at all that stuff.
Counsel McCabe.
I, I vote on a five-year graduated.
You're getting her done today.
Oh, we can kick it around.
Is that what we're trying to shoot her up?
Um, for the Riverside one, I just wanna just quickly touch base with Counsel Rich, um, the pet daycare right now is a permitted use down in the Town Center. Um, so I think your biggest issue is that it's even in there. So from a revitalization perspective, maybe we'll just park that one and kind of look at it too with the mobile vending unit of looking at the actual zoning itself. Which I was on.
Yeah.
Pulls radar over there.
Yeah.
Um, and then back to, yes, so five-year graduated, um, so it'll be a little less of an incentive than our Town Center, which we wanted to focus on. And yeah, anyone wants to discuss that?
Anyone else?
Yes, uh, through the chair, I just wondered about, um, Riverside Commercial, it's new, we call it new. Um, because it's, uh, I mean, it is a development zone where it's very, you know, it can be, uh, it's in demand and, you know, will be in demand again sometime soon, you know, as time has come. I'm just wondering about, uh, if somebody wants to do a stratified condo, like take over the three-bones one, right? And build stratified condos. Um, yeah, it'd be nice to finish it and get it done somehow to get somebody incentivally there to finish it. Can you do anything where you could give an incentive for the developer? Once it changes hands into strata, once it's sold and turned into a strata, then there's no taxes if for the individual owner.
Right now, like, I think that law individually is well, it is zone business now. It was zone residential previously.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm just thinking.
But you're, to make it into residential units, because right now, like the, the ones that hit the revitalization are for waterfront commercial and the tourist accommodation. It wouldn't include seasonal accommodation or like one, two unit, like it wouldn't include the residential pieces, just
Just commercial.
Yes, because in our bylaw, it has to be commercial in nature. So even if you're in that area, but you're building something for a zone, that's for multi-unit. Uh, under a different zone, it, you wouldn't get the tax exemption. It has to be commercial in nature. Because we're trying to, that was the objective of the tax exemption by the, at the time, which we can, something we can't change yet. But.
But if they want to do a commercial on the bottom, that could be, that could be.
Thank you.
Correct. Is there an opportunity here to maybe like, instead of a, a tax revitalization exemption, maybe a, a startup exemption? Like, is there something that at the front end we can do instead of to help developers start up sooner and quicker as opposed to tax?
And we could waive permit fees. I mean, it's pretty little, but I mean, but there's a reason why we charge them, because they have to cover all of our, all of our costs, right?
But I mean, you look at all the exemptions here and we're, we're, yeah, a lot of money on the table too, right?
Yeah.
Counsel Bushel.
That's a good, good point, Colleen. And, and some things, you know, developers, especially nowadays with financing and everything, it's really, it would be really important for the municipality to be able to say upon the sale of a unit, then you pay your DCCs. Because when a developer has to go out and pay, you know, five hundred thousand dollars for DCCs, that's five hundred thousand dollars and he hasn't even put a shovel in the ground yet.
Yeah.
So if you could come out somehow, write, 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 uh, you know, write the development permit where they pay the fee as the unit sells their developments, uh, permit fee. That's, that's very incentive orientated for developers.
And so my understanding on that, because I believe we've looked in this to this a few times in the past, as we're legislated under the Local Government Act, we don't have that flexibility. The only flexibility we have is they can pay it in thirds. Right? So, but we require a bond or something for the other piece. So they still have to have some kind of security there. Like, it's not, it's not our rules, it's under the Local Government Act with the development cost charges. So there's things we can, we can do within our DCC bylaw, which we are cracking open now for housing and stuff where we can waive or reduce some DCCs, but in terms of that payment. Um, but that's something that we can look at and maybe revisit when we do our, um, finance committee meetings is what other incentives are out there, you know? When we bring maybe this back again, because clearly we're not gonna come to a full decision today. But we'll get some more clarity and then maybe we can come back with some other options too.
Exactly, like, yeah, so that we have it all. So this would be your tax revitalization, but if we did it at the front end, this is what this would look like. Okay. Alright, so, um.
Is there any other permitted uses within either of those zones that we wouldn't want to give an exemption for or?
Go ahead.
So it brings over to the corner of, uh, Finlessen and Kell for the corner property there. Uh, apparently that could have a casino on it. That would leave across the street from my house.
Okay, so do we, are, do we all agree with the five-year graduated now?
And this isn't going right into a bylaw, we'll bring everything.
Passing it around.
Yeah.
Okay, Bianca, keep going.
Okay, so then the industrial, um, last meeting, there was discussions about scrapping it, there were discussions about restricting the uses of it. Um, the biggest discussion was on storage, not including exemption for that or other uses that potentially aren't, um, providing a lot of employment for people. So right now I haven't changed anything. This is just to outline of what the current bylaw has and just, these are the permitted uses. So if anyone wants to know about that or if we're okay leaving it as is.
Counsel Bushel, is your hat, do you have your hand up or not? I don't know.
I just had a question on the zone itself. Um, does the zone not extend all the way around the corner at Boys for Toys in the back end? Did he not rezone that? Uh, on the right-hand side, there's a white, uh, not there, all the way down to the end by Brent Grass Place. Further down that, that little round spot there, no, not that one, the one on the right, a little bit more. Next, next lot, uh, up a little bit more, that round, down there. Yeah, that's industrial. You, I mean, I know he did, I think you, like, zone it.
Maybe because it's not in the OCP, like, so it's different, you can zone something, but so this, this was built on our OCP, not on what our zoning is, right? So.
So that was one.
Yeah.
And the other one was at, um, Monashie Front Road, where Mike's building his guitar business. Um, is that not industrial?
Uh, it, it could be, I'd have to check the OCP, but at the time, I think, because it was already developed and these were undeveloped.
Yeah.
That's a good question. I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I think it's industrial. So I just was curious, should you include it? I know he's.
We can look at.
I don't know what he's doing, like, I, I know he's moving and he's moving in there and he's probably gonna do an upgrade on that building. It wouldn't, I mean, it would be a good, uh, example of how to treat a new business coming into the community. If you could help him out in any way, I think.
I think that industrial is another one of those things where instead of doing tax exemptions, you get a startup exemption, like it takes something of, again, I don't know what those options could be, but.
Just curious.
And we have very few, like, options because we're not allowed to support assistance to business or tools are kind of limited. With that, it's like we, under certain conditions, we can waive some DCCs, waive taxes. Um, we can reduce or whatever permit fees, but we have to have like a fair and equitable way to do it, you know? So we have to look into that. So this is the, this is the OCP map here, sorry, I'm just. Yeah, so this is industrial here, which is, oh yeah, you're right, that little nubby is now in there.
Little round spot.
Technical term.
So we had three, we had three industrial um, businesses take advantage of this tax exemption. Is that correct? Out of how many?
A total.
Yeah.
Uh, ten? Ten, I believe.
Over what period? What year? How many years?
Since twenty sixteen, when it was implemented.
Seven years.
I, I, I'm happy with this and don't. Counsel McCabe.
I thought we talked about not happening in industrial zone also. I mean, but I, I, I agree. It's what Counselor Bushel said. We've got the um river song guitars coming in and um, I don't know if it's making or breaking for Mike if he doesn't get a, a tax exemption, but that's along the highway and that'd be highway commercial as opposed to industrial. Or maybe we want to set up a new strip along the highway and call that industrial as opposed to.
Highway commercial.
Highway commercial. Uh, but my first thought is that I think on an industrial level, if someone's gonna do something, I don't think they need uh, they'll have a good business case without a tax incentive to do it anyhow. Um, I, I don't know if we need um a tax exemption for industrial.
Counsel Bushel.
Well, I think, you know, and I, you know, we don't have much industrial land. But it's where you gotta be careful who gets a taxi center, like you don't, you want somebody that's bringing in employee, like, you know, and have employees to have some kind of tax incentive. That's kind of, that's kind of nice. But somebody that wants to buy and build storage or, you know, that doesn't have any employees, that's a little different too. So, yeah, you know, I, I just, I just see a guy, somebody coming into town, I can't remember how many employees, they're gonna produce eight hundred guitars on every year. A lot of guitars.
I think he's nine for now. I think he's nine right now.
Yeah, that's uh nine more people working.
And that was the discussion at last meeting, get the crap out. We could take some of these permitted uses and out a potential exemption. Um.
Good conversation.
Uh, assist from the town. Yeah.
We can, put it aside, you guys can review this on your own and we can, we can bring it back.
Counsel Rich.
Through the chair, do we know um kind of what our competition is doing, like the Enderby and Salmon Arm and Revelstoke? Um, do we know what they're doing for?
I know for Salmon Arm, they have, they have an industrial zone. Um, they did us, I think, some issues with they got a lot of storage. They're completely different than us, like for their industrial park wise, like our industrial park is kind of situated where it's like, we do have a lot of marine storage and stuff coming in and out of there, where theirs is more personal storage, RVs, that kind of thing that they were getting a lot of rebites for. Um, I know they have one building, I think, in Salmon Arm. I don't even know if it's actually operational yet um in their industrial. Um, but that's where their key one is, is in the industrial part.
And they also have a town center tax exemption. Yeah, Enderby doesn't have any. I know, I first did it, I had a summary of, of what some other community was doing. I don't know if Revelstoke does.
Um, Kelly, just sort of just a quick question. What time does uh?
Our technically, our next meeting starts at, at three, but.
Okay, so we need.
Yeah, but we can be a little bit later. The delegate is until three thirty. I gave a little buffer time, so.
Okay.
So we should probably continue on. And I think, I think there is some, um, maybe, I think this should come back, maybe at a final.
I, yeah, this, this, this council agree? Can this come back to the next? Because we got a couple of things here yet that we have to go over. And um then we have to go into camera. Hey, okay, so moving along, let's um, let's put that on the back burner for now and let's look at the second most curling rink lease agreement.
Hey, so this will be uh super quick. I'm just seeking some direction um before we do. So the curling club agreement is from handing out financials for you. They didn't want everybody uh to have the financials, so I'm just giving them to you and they're not hand bomb one. They're actually from an accounting program. So which is always a little bit more reliable, in my opinion. When it's in Excel, you never know who's in there. Um, anyway, so we had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago to go over the lease agreement. Uh, we had a five year lease. Uh, and it was for um fifty, what was it? Uh, uh, sixty six hundred dollars plus propane. So we had a meeting. Uh, they have requested that um that the, that we not charge propane. Uh, historically, I'll just go back. Uh, from twenty thirteen, twenty seventeen, it was, uh, we charged the monthly from October to March. Uh, fifteen hundred dollars a month, which worked out to nine thousand for the year, and we did not charge them propane. Um, then twenty eighteen, so twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two. Um, and it's a weird timeframe. It's from October to March. Uh, we just charged them a flat amount at the beginning of the year, sixty six, sixty six hundred. And you pay the propane. So that kind of works out to more sixteen thousand a year from nine thousand. And so they're finding that that's a lot of money and they're having a hard time keep up with that. They provided us with the financial statements. Um, looking at the balance sheet, oh, the first thing is the some, so this is from September. It's only part year. They have a new bookkeeper. Um, uh, Deb, Debbie's ring, not you though. Um, September to July showing kind of where they're at for the year. Um, and they're at just a loss of about uh twenty three hundred. They also have their balance sheet showing that they do have twenty five thousand dollars in their bank account. But they're looking to invest in some other things for the club and they're worried if they have to continue paying propane that within three years, that twenty five thousand dollars will be chewed up. So they've requested that no propane and to keep the rent the same. So I said, well, at least it has to go up by CPI, which, which has been about two percent, so it would be seven thousand dollars. So with two year term with an option to renew for another two years, subject to reviewing the rent. So on the renewal term, we'd look at the rent. Um, so it's really up to council what direction they want. I, and that's why I just wanted to talk to maybe of the whole more loosely before we brought a formal agreement at the next meeting. Um, so they're asking for seven thousand dollars and to waive the propane. Um, Bianca and I feel that administratively uh charging for, for the propane, because they're on a, we, it's, it's, it's difficult and it's irritating. So I'd rather just have a rent and exclude the propane. We don't charge propane to the pickleballers who rent it for two hundred dollars a month in the summer, so we get a thousand dollars uh from them for their period when they're in there. And we also don't charge um the uh Eagles, uh, any propane or wifi for the hockey accommodation facility. So if we're not happy with that seven thousand, I would suggest increasing that a bit. You know, maybe we bump it back up to nine thousand, which is what we were getting back in twenty thirteen for the monthly amount with no propane. I'd rather increase the rent a bit versus trying to charge out the propane. Um, and, and just high level, yeah, I just wanted to show you how much the, your, the curling rink costs us each year. Uh, it costs us, this excludes revenue, but just the expenses of the curling club. I believe we're about, oh, no, this, the revenue's a bit weird. Right now, with our pickleball income and our propane recovery and our curling club income, which is a bit weird because the propane was billed for twenty twenty one, part year twenty twenty two, and then we waived the rent in twenty twenty two for the curling club, because they asked us to and we did a resolution to. So over the last little bit, really the net cost of the curling club is about fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars a year to have that facility. Including, steal the information and just kind of get some direction. Counsel McCabe.
Uh, I looked at the, your draft uh lease agreement there. Your highlighted stuff. I, I think it looks good with um, was it seven thousand or six thousand, seven thousand?
Yeah, it was previously sixty six hundred.
And then, and then a thousand off because of the branding.
Yeah.
So down to six, well, seven minus thousand. So I, and then, and no propane. I, I think that's a good deal for the curling club. I think it's a good deal for our local taxpayers. Because I always look at it if, if, if our recreation department had to provide curling as a recreational sport, you've got unionized municipal employees there running that operation instead of a non-for-profit employers, it would cost uh our community a lot more. So I, I think it's a good deal for our local taxpayers and it's a good deal for the curling club to keep it at seven thousand with the CPI adjustment. Um, I support that.
Counsel Evans.
Yeah, I would, I would thank you through the chair. I would think eight thousand would be fair because then we are covering a little more of our, our cost for propane.
Counsel Rich.
Uh, through the chair, yeah, I'm with Counselor Evans. Uh, the curling rink is great and, and they have been really working hard on trying to get the schools and getting the kids back and and being open and more, you know, just really getting more community people in. But um yeah, I think eight grand would be, if, like, we split the cost.
Counsel Bushel.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I always wondered, you know, I could never figure out where they got the twenty five thousand if there were, if it was, you know, over the years, they've been hurting so bad, they still had fair amount of money in their bank accounts. They must have got a good donation, because I remember we had meetings with them. Uh, quite a few meetings, but they were never able to tell us where they got the twenty five thousand from. And so, but anyways, now that we know that it's eating away at their bottom line every year, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay either way, like I said. You know, if you meet them halfway in the middle, I'm good. Whatever works.
Counsel Rich.
Yeah, I think that would be reasonable. They do.
Oh, yes.
Their programs are important and it's important to the community, so.
Okay.
I, I say seven or eight, but uh, that, that's just my opinion, because again, if, if the district had to provide that service, it would cost way more. The district, if, if the curling club said well, ac- actually for Counsel Bushel's question, yeah, a few years back, they had thirty six and it's been slowly, I think that's when, you know, uh, we had the a larger club and membership fees and all that. So it's been slowly going down and not going back up. Um, it's, it's recreational service that I feel that the district should be providing for the community. And you've got a non-for-profit stepping up and say, hey, we'll do that for you. Um, the arena runs as a subsidy.
Thanks, you, thank you, Counsel McCabe. Kate, let's wrap this up quickly. Go ahead, Counsel.
Just for clarity, oh, Siobhan or Counsel Rich, were you suggesting eight thousand and then they, they pay the propane?
No.
No, no, just eight, eight thousand flat or.
Yeah, just for the rent.
For the rent, so the rent gets up a little bit, end up splitting what the propane is.
And I also agree on the eight grand and we pick up the propane. Is everybody, do we have, I just wanted to clarify that. Sorry, Counsel McCabe, I think the rest have spoken. Go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, perfect. Then I think that the, the majority is going for eight and I will add also a cloth. I talked about this because it is a reduced amount that I'm gonna ask them for annual financial statements. So that we know where things are at. Okay, thank you. It'll be at the next uh council meeting.
Okay.
I know we're pressed for time.
Yeah, we are.
Nine, seven months. I, I don't understand that because I can't remember any time that we've curled in April.
It's to March. I think this is.
Like, not that new lease agreements, don't you go on.
October to March.
Is it? I thought it was going to the end of April. I thought it said seven months.
In line with the previous agreement. It, it's what, it's when they want it.
Yeah, October first to April thirtieth. So maybe that's a typo in there in section two point two oh one.
Take a look at.
Thirtieth. I, I think that should be March thirty first or whatever is the last day in March.
Okay.
So now it's only uh six months and seven, it could be probably six thousand instead.
Okay, let's get moving here. Kelly, you have everything you need. Thank you. Okay, um, Mayor and Counselor, um, sorry, strategic priorities. And Mayor and Counsel report. Um, Counsel Evans.
Uh.
Buzz through this. Should, should we just put this on, spell this as? Um.
If anybody has a really important update.
How about we just put the reports on.
Regular.
And I'm just gonna go, Deb, do you have anything that you?
Just mind your phone best since weekend. I'm all sold out of my lawn walks. I'm getting what tape on the rest of it. No bare gardens, no, uh, you know, like, so no band, I mean, no, uh, stage or whatever, so no district club this year. All music, all music, all weekend, food, vendors.
Perfect. Okay, is anyone else online that has their hand up for questions?
Ian Bailey joined us.
Okay. Oh, Kate, really fast.
I just want to thank Mayor and Counsel for the thousand, one thousand dollar, dollar donation to the high school for volleyball and, or for basketball uniforms. The end.
Mayor's, the mayor's serendipity fund.
Yes.
Perfect, okay. You're welcome. Um, all right, so we're gonna adjourn this meeting. Recommendation at the committee poll meeting for September the thirteenth, twenty twenty three be adjourned at the time being three oh nine. Counsel Bushel, Counsel Rich, all in favor? Carrie. We are going to.
Could I get a picture of the following and that certificate?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, to me. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna.